Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a Bellingham City Council meeting, Monday, August 14th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The only announcement I have to say is that the Bellingham City Council meets all the requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Normally, we go into our public pledge of allegiance right now. Because of recent events, I'm going to make some special and unusual comments. I love this country, and I particularly love our American ideals. In this country, we believe that there are inalienable and universal rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We've seen some recent events across the country, and some not so far away, which has raised the specter of prejudice, and discrimination, and separatism, and even worse, racism. There's been deaths over the matter. And that's not the America I believe in. And so, as we say the pledge of allegiance today together, when we say it, I want you to please pay attention to the closing words that say "liberty and justice for all," because that's the America I believe in, and that's the America I support. Aye.
Let the flag fly of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamill.
Here.
Jeanne Knutson.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
And Pinky Vargas is excused.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. After the public hearing, we'll have a public comment, or open public comment period. But first, the hearing. It's a public hearing to consider text amendments to the Bellingham Municipal Code, in particular Sections 2000015, 2000045, and 2000230. I see our planning director before us, who will introduce these text amendments, and we'll have a public hearing.
Good evening, councilmembers. As you recall, our process, as dictated by the Municipal Code and state law, requires a code amendment to first be considered by the Planning Commission. Public hearing to be held, and comment to be taken, and recommendation to be forwarded on. Tonight, we present to you the Planning Commission's recommendation, background on the proposed revisions, in advance of public comment at this hearing. I'll turn it over to Kurt Knabfeldt, and he'll talk about the specifics of the application.
Thank you. Good evening, Kurt Knabfeldt, Planning and Community Development Department. Tonight, you'll be conducting a public hearing to consider a code amendment that would allow the planning director to modify the timing of multifamily construction in certain residential single-mixed zones, as well as some minor code cleanup changes in other sections of the code. Currently, several residential single-mixed zones allow up to 25 percent of the total number of dwelling units to be in a project to be duplex or multifamily. This zoning is a carryover zoning from areas that were annexed from Waukam County. The old Waukam County zoning was known as UR-MX, Urban Residential Mix. We commonly refer to URMX. So, we're not changing the zoning tonight, just modifying the language in it. The existing rules require at least 50 percent of single-family housing units to be constructed before multifamily buildings can be constructed. The RJ Group, who we've got representatives of tonight, submitted a text amendment request to allow the multifamily to come before the single family for their property near the Costco site. The director initiated the amendment. However, while evaluating it, we also looked and decided that this would be appropriate for other urban residential mixed zones as well. It made sense, if just for one, we should probably do it for all of them. This, realizing that the transitional housing forms between non-residential uses and residential single homes are a good planning tool, we expanded that to several areas. And you can see the complete areas that we've expanded to on Page 34 of your packet. That shows the map of the highlighted areas where we'll be changing the zoning. The amendment, as I mentioned, does not change the zoning, but simply allows the director to approve a different order and timing of the type of development for properties abutting non-residential single zones. As Director Seppler mentioned, the Planning Commission did hold a hearing on this. They did recommend approval of the changes. The amendments will correct inconsistent code language. They'll improve the implementation of our land use ordinance, meaning it's consistent everywhere, and provides an opportunity to establish that transitional area between non-residential uses and residential uses. Staff believes that it's an appropriate code change, is compliant with our comprehensive plans, and we recommend that you approve the amendments after the public hearing tonight.
Would you be able to put a map up on the overhead? Yeah. And after you've done that, can you see if anyone's signed up for the public hearing? Before we open up the public hearing, though, are there any questions from the city council? So, it's just those areas outlined, the dark outline?
Correct. It's these areas in the dark outline, here, here, and then a smaller here. And where it will apply is, it applies to the properties that are abutting the different non-residential zoning areas, there and there.
Okay.
And no one has signed up.
Okay, no one has signed up, so we're still going to have a public hearing. If anyone in the room would like to come forward and comment on this proposal? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to bring the public hearing to a close. We received no testimony. Bring it back to the city council. Jean?
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I think, before us. Any further discussion? Okay. I would just say that this seems like common sense. I appreciate the fact that the zoning isn't changing, it's really a matter of timing, and it is really appropriate that we consider transitions in addition areas.
Let me make it clear. Move approval of the ordinance in our packet.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes.
April.
So, I do want to thank the RJ Group. I think they've spearheaded a couple of different things, and when they come out a project, they're really looking at how to make it the best for their project, but also how to make it easier for others coming into it. And I think we're going to continue to see them helping us hash out, and hopefully, other organizations as well. So, thank you for taking the time to do it, and being willing to explore different housing types, different ways to transition, and really meeting the need of our community. So, I hope you continue.
Excellent. Sorry, we have a motion before us to approve an ordinance amending the Bellingham Municipal Code to apply to certain single-family areas where mixed uses are allowed, to affect the timing of those allowed mixed uses. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six-zero with one excused absence. So, we're now going to the 15-minute public comment period. This is a time for people to come forward, to give them three minutes each, to speak to the city council as a whole. For those who haven't been here before, we do have a timer over here. When the bell goes off, you actually, just like that, you still actually have 30 seconds to finish up your comments, so you have a little bit longer to talk.
He'll call you.
Okay, at the end, I'll just open up the floor. Thank you. The first speaker tonight is Jamie Douglas.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Douglas, and I wanted to speak about the affordable housing directions that are being taken here. One of the concerns that I have is, I feel like Bellingham has unconsciously slipped into some unforeseen consequences. And that is, we like to think of ourselves as welcoming, and progressive city, and yet, if you go around different places, we look an awful lot of the same. There's a lot of lack of diversity that I see. And it's pretty hard to have diversity if you don't have a lot of diversity in the offerings available in housing, particularly in what can be afforded. If you always wind up where your housing's going to look like, you know, we allow houses to be any color, you know, we accept all shades of beige, then you wind up with a pretty bland-looking landscape, and you don't even realize it. And so, I wanted to encourage the city council to look at this particular issue about housing, because it has big ramifications that spill over into a lot of other areas. If you wind up where there's only one income level of housing in an area, then you're only going to have one economic level of students going to our schools in that area, and you're going to wind up having... So, this affects our school system, it spills over into all kinds of interactions that we have. To me, diversity is extremely important. The way you weaken any system, the way you weaken metals, is you make them all the same. Crops, if you have all the same genetics in crops, you know, you wind up suffering as a community. So, I see this as really important for us to be able to attract everybody who would be interested to live in Bellingham, to come to Bellingham, and not feel excluded. And this, to me, is happening an awful lot with, in the housing. So, how to exactly do that? I'd ask you to look at any kinds of the rules and regulations, and ask yourself one question. How is this rule making us the same? Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Up next is Andrew Natta Douglas.
Hi, my name is Andrew Natta Douglas. I live here in Bellingham, and I do have a background in living in Vancouver, British Columbia, Ottawa, Ontario, Chicago, Illinois, the Bay Area, all over there, Southern California, and in Seattle, I was the home health and hospice nurse all over King County. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we do need to realize that we're not a small town anymore. We need to build more appropriate to the population we have. And I live on the North End. It is diverse, and that is wonderful for me, because that's the population I'm used to, and what I grew up with. However, there is a lot of not-in-my-backyard thinking when it comes to the single-family home areas. And the places where I've lived, where they have built middle-income housing and low-income housing, they have built appropriate housing in many different neighborhoods, not just as we have done in Bellingham, just in the North End. So, I believe that we are creating a segregated city by both race and income, because we do not have affordable housing in places that used to be affordable in this town. And I think you all know that already, because you've seen the explosion in prices of housing here. But I, myself, lived in boarding houses in Vancouver, British Columbia, and in other areas, which were a wonderful step into housing that was affordable for a student. And while I am upper-class at this point in my life, my children are not, and they could not afford to live in Bellingham. So, I hope that you will build so that our children can live in Bellingham, in all the different areas, so that there's no great burden on one school district. Fairhaven only has, I think, 18 percent low in free meal programs, children, whereas Birchwood has, I believe, 67 percent. I think you guys already know all these numbers, though. And that is a very important measure, because I went to a segregated school, an elementary school, and then being bussed into a desegregated school, into a black school, it opened my eyes, and was a wonderful experience about how the world is a much better place than I thought it was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Dan McShane.
Dan McShane, 1451 Grant Street, Bellingham. I did come to the council meeting during the day today, because this issue was actually, personally, really, really important to me. And I spoke to you maybe about a month ago, that, you know, you're representing me and the citizens of Bellingham for an opportunity of partnership with the Lummi tribe, as far as serving water to an area. My impression today was that you're now putting your heads really to this, and getting through a lot of the stuff that's around a decision like this, but it's, in my mind, a pretty simple decision, but I know that's not simple for you. But the main thing, tonight, I just wanted to come in, after witnessing today, that I was encouraged by the actions of the council, and appreciate that you're moving this along and giving it the attention that it deserves, because it really is an important thing that will have generational consequences, that decision. So, instead of looking very precisely at this moment in time, this is a decision that will have a consequence for generations. And we've seen those kinds of decisions before with our First Nations peoples. And unfortunately, some of our predecessors maybe have set us back a bit, but you have an opportunity to move us forward, and you've been offered that, to serve that. And so, I very much hope you decide to serve water to the Lummi Nation's property there, but appreciate the time it takes to do your diligence on this. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Our last speaker will be Kate James.
Hi, I'm Kate James. I actually have two issues. But in the interest of time, I think I'm going to speak to the one that seems to be the conversation of the evening, and is particularly pertinent to me. It's another side of it. The other one, if I could perhaps, as per Councilman Lillquist, had an email conversation with him, if I could maybe enter this into the records. I don't know if you do that sort of thing, but I can leave that one for you. The other one, I had occasion to write both of them down, and so, I just will read this to you, if I could. "In two weeks, I'll be without a home. It may interest you how I arrived at this misfortune, because it hasn't happened to me anywhere else around the world in the last decades of my life. I presently live on the second floor of a house while the owner lives below. New tenants will move in come September. Accordingly, I've spent months, literally months, searching for a new home. But more months of looking won't help for one sole reason: I have a dog. This dog is nine, has traveled and lived with me throughout the U.S. and beyond, and is my best friend. My only resident family, he's a cocker spaniel, Australian shepherd, and weighs 40 pounds. As for me, I'm a 60-year-old woman who has lived throughout the U.S. and beyond, and been diversely occupied in my life till now. I was an intelligence officer in the Air Force, sole proprietor for a retail wine and gift shop, director of two nonprofits, journalist, postmaster, and the list goes on. My last domicile is southwestern Vermont, but I missed my children, one in Seattle at UW, and one just graduated from Western here in Bellingham. Had I known what lay in store for my dog and me in the city, though, I'd have thought twice about settling here. You know, come September and homelessness, I could just do a runner, something at which I've excelled around the globe. But you see, I have two good jobs here, with wonderful employers, one of which has invested considerable time and expense in training me. Simple integrity demands I do whatever I can to honor the commitment they made to me. It's awfully hard, though. The brick wall of denying housing access to any prospective renter with a dog is simply stunning. Perhaps there should be a disclaimer for all who enter these city limits: the dogs are not welcome. I've learned in my almost-two-year residence here, that Bellingham considers itself a caring, conscience-led community. Let me tell you something, Bellingham. There is no compassion in denying families' homes because one member has four legs. No humanity in decreeing that they cannot share our lives. There is no equity in barring domestic animals a habitat while allowing wildlife to roam free without limits. And I give no quarter to a community that condones the sheer avalanche of unmitigated, uncaring rudeness meted out by management companies and private citizens as they slam metaphoric doors in our faces." 30 seconds. "From Alaska to Germany, Hawaii to France, Vermont and Nevada to Switzerland, Italy, Iceland, fill in the blank, I have never, never lived in a city that values its dogs, none at all. I and my dog will join your list of homeless vets on one September, and that fact will be entirely down to you, Bellingham." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to reports from our regular committee meetings. The first committee which met today was this morning. That was the Planning Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Jeanne Knutson.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item today, and it was titled "The Missing Middle: Affordable Housing in Bellingham." On the Planning Committee with me is councilmembers Dan Hamill and April Barker. The missing middle is a hot topic across the nation as cities tackle the affordable housing crisis. Today, the committee has invited community members to explore the demand, availability, and potential influence middle housing may have on the affordable housing crisis and the long-term health and sustainability of our community. Panelists today included Carrie Veldman, and the project manager of the RJ Group, an architectural engineering and design firm, and member of Sustainable Connections; Sarah Gooden, professional and longtime resident; and Ali Taishi, Bellingham native, principal at AVT Consulting LLC for land use permits and feasibility and planning commission member. On June 13th, 2017, we had a town hall meeting on affordable housing, and on July 24th, a work session on affordable housing. Today, we did hear from those three individuals. We heard a lot of good testimony and ideas. We talked about ADUs, cottage housing, row housing, townhouses, and duplexes. Also, today, we heard from Rick Seppler. Mayor Kelly was there, along with Kurt Knabfeldt. It was a good discussion. We also heard from some community members with their ideas and concerns. This is just one of many work sessions we'll continue to have, and we will have another one, I would assume, on September 11th. It will be our next committee meeting. End of committee.
Okay, thank you. The next committee which met was Public Works, Public Safety, and Terry Bornham is the chair of that committee.
Thank you, Michael. Our committee had two items before us today. The first was an interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham for installation, operation, and maintenance of casings, conduit, and district energy piping within the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. The city and the port are parties to the interlocal agreement for facilities within the waterfront district, dated December 18th, 2013, pursuant to which the city agreed to construct Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. The city is scheduled to commence work on the project in the fall 2017. The attached proposed interlocal provides for the city to include certain port elements within the project at the port's expense, including casings and conduit to house franchise utilities, fiber optic cable, and district energy piping that will serve adjacent port properties. The proposed interlocal also authorizes the city to access and use the port's Aeration Stabilization Basin, the ASB, to manage construction, stormwater, and groundwater during the project. The committee recommended approval of the interlocal, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham to construct for the installation, operation, and maintenance of casing, conduit, and district energy piping within the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. Any further discussion on this issue? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero with one excused absence.
The last item we had was a bid award for the 2017 Transportation Benefit District Restriping Project, ES-0536. The 2017 TBD Restriping Project involves bicycle and pedestrian safety and efficiency improvements through alterations of channelization on multiple streets throughout the city. The city received four bids, which were publicly opened on August 2nd, 2017. Applied Line Inc. was the responsible bidder, who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $239,645, including any applicable Washington State's sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $359,425. So, the bid came in about $100, more than $100,000 under the estimate. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion before us to award the bid for a street restriping. Any discussion of this? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six-zero with one excused absence. End of committee.
End of committee.
Okay, we'll go on to the next one, which is Parks and Recreation Committee. April Barker is the chair.
We had one item for committee. It was a bid award for the interim shoreline stabilization at Boulevard Park. The project includes improvements to Boulevard Park to stabilize and protect the shoreline, which has been impacted by high tides, winds, and waves. A portion of the park is contaminated from previous industrial uses, and a remedial investigation and feasibility study is currently underway. An interim action is needed to temporarily stabilize the shoreline while the city, with oversight from the Washington State Department of Ecology, continues to evaluate cleanup options. Bids were publicly opened on August 1st, 2017. Staff recommends this contract be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, RAS Construction of Bellingham, in the amount of $262,651.81, which includes Washington State sales tax. There is an opportunity for the city to recoup some of these costs due to the industrial uses previously, and we could recoup up to about $200,000, it sounds like. So, with that, committee voted unanimously to recommend, and I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion before us to award the bid for interim shoreline stabilization at Boulevard Park. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that also passes unanimously, six to zero with one excuse absence.
End of committee.
Thank you, April. Okay, we now go on to the committee of the whole. Committee of the whole had four items before us. The first one was a discussion of the city's legislative agenda and the 2017 legislative session down in Olympia. Our representative down there, Mr. Ben Buchholz from Tom McBride and Associates, gave us a rundown on the year in Olympia, on their budget pressures, on the fact that the McCleary decision for funding education is sort of taking up a lot of the attention. He did have some positive elements. Many of the things that the city asked for were preserved or kept on funding lists. Towards the end, the conversation turned to the capital budget. That was one of the budgets that the legislature did not approve. City Bellingham is not unique. Many communities and jurisdictions across the state have projects that are on that list that would be funded, school districts and conservation districts in the city. We discussed that there was at least about $30 million in direct projects for the city that are on that list. Also, the triage facility on the county is on that list, and there are many other capital projects as well. We made a motion for the city council to sign on to a letter that the administration is preparing, to basically, to deliver the message to our representatives that these are the direct impacts. And so, Kayla, your staff, you'll be writing that soon. So, that was the motion. So, when that letter comes back, I'm authorized to sign it on our behalf. Okay? So, that was that item. The next item was a discussion of the potential economic impacts of providing water service to the Lummi Nation. We just heard a comment on the water service. The Lummi Nation has requested to purchase wholesale water from the city, a property that they own outside of city limits. The city contracted with Western Washington University Center for Economic and Business Research to conduct an analysis of the potential economic impact of serving water to the Lummi at its Slater Road location pursuant to the Lummi's request. Due to the unknown nature of the Lummi's proposed project, that is, they're not sure exactly what they'll be building yet, the CEBR analyzed multiple scenarios, determined the likely economic impact of each of them on the City of Bellingham. We heard that report today from Hart Hodges and his associate, James McCafferty. The analysis focused on retail development, and if there was retail development, significant retail development, what effect that would have on sales taxes and business taxes. There was some discussion that an all retail development is not what the Lummi are proposing, although, again, they're not sure, but they're probably looking and have considered a different mixes. The conversation then turned to the request for a purchase of water service itself. There was a motion made and passed. The council directed the administration to continuous discussions with the Lummi on water service with a focus on utility delivery issues. I think that's... And then we asked for the administration to come back to us at our second meeting in September. I think that's about it. The third item was an annual update on rental registration and safety inspection program. When the city council adopted a rental registration program back in 2015, we also set in requirement for an annual report back to the council on the status of the program and progress to date. The planning director presented to the council information on the activities. Let me turn to that. It was a pretty thorough report. We need to inspect approximately 3,000 units per year. Of those 3,000 units, two-thirds about are inspected by city inspectors. State law requires that they have a private inspector option. About a third were inspected by private inspectors. The final pass rate is upward of 85%, 90%. That isn't necessarily on first inspection. Both correction, the majority of units are quickly coming into compliance. The major failings were lack of smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, problems with emergency exits and rescue openings, problems with handrails, and with exposed wiring. The rental registration program focuses on the safety issues, and so those are safety issues, not cosmetic issues or livability issues of other sorts. The planning staff also mentioned that they see room for improvements, for tweaks, for clarifications, and for maybe some minor code changes in the rental registration program, and they'd be bringing forward those proposals in the near future. So that was for information only for the city council. The fourth item was a discussion of boards and commissions' membership requirements. This is a follow-up to our June meeting where the city council brought up the issue of our requirements both for residency and/or for citizenship to be on any of the city's boards and commissions. In the discussion, our city attorney brought forward the fact that I'd say roughly half of our boards and commissions have state laws or legal requirements that have to do with how those boards and commissions are fulfilling certain kinds of important functions, and so that residency, or sorry, citizenship requirements or other requirements are mandated. However, we do have several other advisory bodies that the city has created on our own, and for those, there's no legal requirement that we have to have residency or citizenship requirements. So we made two motions today. One is to relax the residency requirement, even for running for office. You just need to be in Bellingham for one year. We thought that was a reasonable threshold for residency for our advisory boards as well. And we've also decided to remove the citizenship requirement. If you're a resident of our community, you have expertise, we can benefit from your advice, you can apply, and we may appoint you to one of our advisory boards. So those are two motions, and those actual changes will come forward at some future date with some code amendments. Those are the motions for that. Next, we have approval of meeting minutes. We have one set of meeting minutes from August 7th, and we also have an older set of meetings' minutes from July 24th.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us, yes, April.
Just a small correction. It's just the Justice Committee, not Criminal Justice Committee. Kind of cleaning up some of the old stuff.
Right, thank you, yes. We're going to get that right in the future. Okay, now that's on the August 7th meeting. That wasn't on the other minutes, just the 7th.
I thought it got corrected on the other one.
Okay, could you check both? Okay, so with that correction, any further corrections or changes? All those in favor approving the minutes from July 24th and August 7th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six-zero with one excused absence. We then move on to old and new business. Does anyone want to reprise what they brought up? There was a motion that was made by councilmember Barker. Do you want to summarize that, or shall I summarize it?
No, I can summarize it. It's just going to committee. So I just asked that it come to, I think, committee of the whole, to have a conversation about appointing the Historical Preservation Commission to have a community conversation around the Pickett Bridge and then bring back a presentation for us to understand that a little bit better and the community concerns around it.
The naming of the Pickett Bridge in particular.
Yeah, not specifically to rename it, but just to have a community conversation around that and then bring us back those findings.
Okay, anything else under old and new? Okay, we are moving along. Executive Session Report. We had two items added to the executive session. Excuse me as I shuffle some paperwork. So instead of one, there were three of them. The first was a potential litigation matter with regard to a claim number 2017-12. Staff provided information on an appeal of the city's denial of this claim for damages. I'll be asking for a motion to uphold the city's denial on that claim.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to uphold the city's denial of claim number 2017-12. Any discussion of this? Peter, any reason to talk about this? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero with one excused absence. Next matter was a litigation matter, Swaddash versus the city of Bellingham. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. It was for information discussion and no council action was taken. The third matter was collective bargaining strategy session. Staff provided information regarding a labor relations bargaining strategy. This is information, again, no city council action was taken. We now move on to the mayor's report.
I received a communication from Sheriff Elfo asking for a volunteer from the council to participate with myself or any mayor on the Finance and Operating Advisory Committee that's part of the JUFFA. And so if anyone is interested in participating on that, let me know.
What is the timeline for that? When does that meet?
I'm...I don't...yeah, I don't think there's necessarily a timeframe, but as soon as possible would be probably nice.
I think Pinky's not here. We should appoint her.
That's usually what we do when people are here.
We were trying to...whatever.
Is there anybody at this point who is interested in volunteering to serve on that Finance and Operating Committee?
I'll do it.
Okay?
No one else is interested?
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm sorry, he was talking. He suggested that we wait till the 11th when all members are here.
Okay, you're right, because Pinky may be interested.
Yep.
You can duke it out.
Kate's match between Pinky and Roxanne.
Can we look into the bylaws and how we handle that? Thank you for volunteering, and we'll see if it stays that way. Kelly, is there more? That's it? Okay. Consent agenda.
Ooh, it's a tie.
Second.
Tie goes to the better-looking person. We know who that is, so that's the end of that.
Okay. All those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Is there...there's no final reading of ordinances? Is there any further business before the Bellingham City Council? Okay, thank you, everyone. Fast meeting, the meeting is adjourned.